Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to the Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners meeting, August 11th, 2022. George, can you do roll call, please?
Sure thing. Commissioner Baaco?
Here.
Commissioner Godioso?
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski?
Here.
Commissioner Neary, Lisa Catania, Michael Pierce, and myself, George Needles, present.
Thank you. As some people may not know tonight, the Upper Chichester Township Board of Commissioners meeting will be held in a hybrid format. We did pass this resolution last month or so. It allows for in-person attendance and participation by members of the board as well as the public. The public may participate during citizens' comments by dialing. This is where I am opening up citizens' comments for people that cannot make it here tonight. They could dial 571-748-4021. That number again is 571-748-4021. Enter in the PIN 3571690 pound. And the PIN again is 3571690 pound. Once you get on, you can unmute your phone by pressing star six. Please state your name and address prior to making any public comment. We will leave the phones open for a couple, a few minutes for any public comment by phone. Take note, there was no call-ins or in-citizens' comment. We'll now go to the citizens that are here tonight. We'll start with the first row. Come to the podium if you have something for citizens' comment. State your name and telephone number and address, please, please. Anybody in the first row want to go?
Do you think I need that? Am I not loud enough? Just not to mention the, the trouble it's going to cause building the project, the dirt, the noise, the operation of the project, the hours that they're going to run, which cannot be enforced. The fact that they don't have a tenant at this point, or that might have changed, I don't know, sir. It's just 45 feet tall. I don't want to look out my window and see it. You need to do any of the other neighbors. Not when there's warehouse space available throughout the township that you don't need to build. There's already warehouses there, empty. I just think we've overbuilt this township to the point where you don't need another empty building. So I, I guess I'll make comments after he makes his presentations.
Thank you. Anybody else on the?
Now that I have the mic, be careful. So I don't want the warehouse. Oh, sorry. Barbara Rebold, 5102 Martin Lane and 5110 Martin Lane. Our street is perpendicular to Summers. We are a small little neighborhood, but that doesn't mean we should be represented in a small way. We have been to the planning commission. I understand this is zoned appropriately and we can't fight against that. But I think what really should matter is what the residents' quality of life will be, not how many taxes will come in as a result of this. I also very much oppose what they plan to do with the historical building. This is the last farm in Upper Chichester that has a solid agricultural background. I've been here for 34, 35 years. So, but you're still a newbie when you've been here that long. I think that the plan to move the historical house is not a good one. I think that the plan to rehab it is not a good one. I think that rehabbing it just means making it all stand there and just, you know, you can still make offices inside. When the Butler Farm came down, we were also worried about the historical piece there and they, oops, knocked over the wrong building. So they pretty much cleared the whole land themselves and left a little tiny thing up to represent historical. Yes, the Alphouse. So this is, we lived in between two farms. We knew the people who lived on those farms and now you want to put a warehouse there. So many of the people moved here for the very bucolic nature of the, the area. And I don't think I can say anything more.
Thank you. Anybody else in the front row?
Hi, I'm just going to follow up with what she said. My name's Emily Lair, 1602 Summers Lane. What she just said about moving here for the imagery. I'm not from here. I grew up in a little town in South Jersey, blueberry capital of the world named Hatminton. I don't know if you've ever heard of it. A lot of farmland, but a really well-off community. Was born and raised, loved it. My husband is a Philly cop. We had to live in Philly for a certain amount of time. We got married. We stayed there. We had a kid and we said, we don't want to be here anymore. Let's find a suburb in Pennsylvania to move to. And this is what we found and we fell in love with it. And that's why we moved here. I fell in love with the land. My neighbors, they're all great. And I don't want to see this go up for the same reasons that you said. And from what I've heard, there are other warehouses in the area that, you know, promised that the noise would shut off at a certain time. As a parent and, you know, I taught elementary school for 12 years before I had my daughter, the noise, it's going to affect children. Their grades will suffer. And, you know, I'm just, we're just not happy about that. So we don't want to see this happen. Pollution, noise, everything. There's probably so many other things that can be done with that land besides a warehouse. So that's all I have to say.
I've got to make a statement before we move forward. This is public comment. There's no presentation here tonight from the developer. The presentation was last week. This is all public comment that we're in right now. So there will not be a presentation with the developer tonight. That was last week. But anybody else in the first row want to make comment?
Yeah, I do. Don Evans, 1506 Summers Lane. And I personally can't think of anybody who would want to look out their backyard and change from a green pasture to a warehouse with the motors running on the roof, the trucks running. Now, any of yous up there would want that in your backyard? I wouldn't think so. Not to mention the traffic. They say they'll come out on Chichester Avenue and cross the street. Everybody knows if you want to get on 95 South, you're going to go down Chy Avenue. And if you want to go to 322 to go west, you're going to come down Summers Lane. And I know they say they're going to block Summers Lane off, but that's probably not going to happen for four or five years. I just wanted to say, just imagine it's your backyard and they want to put this there. Nobody would want it. Thanks.
Anybody in the second row? Any citizens' comments in the third row? Is there anybody in the fourth row?
Good evening. John Sisko, 1215 Eric Drive. I have a couple of comments. One, this past July 19th, I get a text from your inspection department personnel about some dirt that I dumped on one of the lots that I had. I got that text within an hour it was dumped, an hour. The text was telling me what I can do and can't do. I know what I can do and can't do. I wasn't doing any harm. 2019 in the fall, I called the same inspection department. I'm one of about seven homeowners that have a rainwater runoff problem off of Eric Drive. At that time, I brought to their attention what the problem was and what shouldn't be done and not done. Thirty days after that, I called back because I didn't hear nothing. Here's the reply. Yo dude, I've been busy. August 2020, I sent the township a letter, certified letter, put them on notice. Because that's what he told me in July 19th that he was going to do to me. I didn't get anything because if I did, it would have been up here the same day. 2020, I sent township a letter in August stating what the problem is and what was going on. For 35 years, those seven residents didn't get any water because I fixed it 35 years ago. Actually, when her dad was the engineer, we had a problem. It was done. We never had a complaint in 35 years plus. Now we do. This is going on two years this August, two years, the time limit. Your inspector tells me I have to remove stuff off of my lot ASAP. He didn't tell that gentleman to take care of his lot ASAP and we're still at it today. Now respectfully, can I have an update? Or is there one?
I don't know nothing about this.
You don't know nothing about it? I sent the township two letters.
We, John, as you know, and we've discussed, the courts have constantly pushed this back. So, you know, and as I've said to you any number of times, the guys that want to do it improperly, just do it. The guys that follow the rules have to follow the rules. We have rules. We have to take it to court. We're taking it to court. The courts, you know, moved it back to November. You know that I've been over there several times.
And the township was there, the township engineer was there October of 2020. They were in a bad, which I'd be grateful for, at least they inspected it. But we're going on two and a half years. I'm not even mad at the guy behind me for what he did, to be honest with you. I'm more mad at what's going on in this township and how it was handled and how it was falling down through the chain. And then July 19th, I get a text this long, feel like the state I have an hour after I did something. And I've been waiting over two years for this. To me, that's, excuse me, a little piss poor. That's just the way it is. I, I've done wrong things in my life. I've done good things in my life, but I'm going to stand here right now and dictate it. And I'll take any punch that comes at me. That's just the way it is. I have one more comment. Unfortunately, this gentleman here, I just happened to come here last Thursday. I walked into the meeting by accident about Summers Lane just to see what was going on. And to be honest with you, the concerns that I have, I brought up at that meeting with the emergency access. I didn't see one. I just saw designated road for that. I also had the concerns for the homeowners that live there on Summers Lane. Because you are going to build a 40-foot-high building, which you're allowed. You're allowed 50 foot according to yours. And you have an eight-foot fence that's supposed to be a sound barrier and you have so-called experts to say that works. I don't know of any common sense to say a building that high, whatever's there, is going to work, other than talk. So respectfully to the people of Summers Lane, I hope they get their matter resolved. I hope things go forward what they have to do. And everything gets done and the township goes forward. Because I know you have all their issues in the township with the same type of industrial park settings that you're living with today. And I realize that this zoning wasn't changed for this gentleman, it was changed for a gentleman before him, that he probably gave thoughts and ideas and stuff that he was going to do that never materialized. But that's not his fault either because things happen in life and he sold it to this gentleman, which he has the right to do what he wants to do. But now the board's right to now scrutinize what's going on and the planning board's thing to be scrutinized. I think there's a lot of comments that probably weren't addressed or should have been addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Chris Gisbary, 1600 Summers Lane. I'm here with most of my neighbors. I just want to express that I and my family are also opposed to the warehouse going up. I missed a couple of the meetings, so I'm not sure what, what was discussed, but, you know, one of my main concerns is the trees in our backyard. I have small children. My neighbor has a small child. And even the adults that are out in their backyards, when they start excavating and those trees die, you know, like I said, I'm not sure if that was resolved yet, but it's one of my main concerns. All of my friends moved to Delaware because they wanted to pay less taxes. And I said, you know, I want to stay where I was raised. I want to stay in Chichester. You know, we found a little street with a nice house on it, great view, and, you know, that's doing a complete one-eaty with this project. So, you know, I hope I didn't fall into a trap. You know, I would love to stay in this town. I work in this town and I do have a little bit of pride in this town. So you know, I hope I don't regret my decision buying that house on Summers Lane because I think all of our voices here have been loud this entire, during this entire plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. Greg Minor, 1601 Summers Lane. Most of the objections and problems have been discussed and gone over numerous times. I just, two things I wanted to touch bases on, I actually focused on mostly one. The last meeting, we brought up objections and questions and, and the committee went off and they, they came up and they said, well, we'll approve this conditionally and here's our objections. And they listed a number of things that we had discussed and had gone over and so on. For example, no trucks, no traffic between 10:00 and 7:00 in the morning, no ongoing trucks running and just sitting there making noise, no trucks on Summers Lane and certain access. The question I have is a real problem is that once all this stuff is, is finished and probably, you know, some of the people that, that were involved in making those requirements and laying them out and accepting and so forth, they may be gone. And all of a sudden, they're not observed anymore. It just kind of goes, goes away. For example, right now, there's a, a ordinance that says there's no large trucks on Summers Lane. Guess what? The definition of large trucks has really gone up dramatically since the time that we've been there. And we get large trucks, not all the time, but we get them. And so I'm wondering, is that kind of thing going to happen with some of these other ordinances? And will we hear noise between 10:00 and 7:00 in the morning? And will there be idling trucks just kind of sitting there? Will the access to the property be to not just through the designated area, but through, you know, the other areas that if they can get into the property? That's my concern. I want to make sure that all of those things that were discussed and that we want to have and that have been agreed upon are in writing in the agreements. Because if they're not in writing, then they're basically, they don't exist. And I'm not sure who, who, you know, you have to see or talk to to make sure that happens, but I, I think that's something that's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments? Doesn't have to do just with this 4800. It's any, anything as Mr. Sisko had also. Lisa, wasn't there last week, wasn't there something addressed with the trees and to keep it, some of the trees that are still there? There was a lot of issue of more trees being put in the back of the building. And some of the trees that are there today are still going to be there. I think there was one concern last week on somebody's property that was, the tree was dead that they wanted to remove. Right. Right. Okay. I thank everybody for the comment. We will be addressing this a little later tonight in our meeting for the resolution that came up in front of us. And I just want to make a comment. As the last gentleman said, Mr. Minor was saying that the resolution does state conditions. There's 16 of them in front of me. And there are the comments from the engineer, the planner, all the planning board. Every step by step, the comments are in. It's not in the resolution. It's just stated that what date it was presented. Zernan Officer, the planning board, the engineer, the Board of Commissioners, everything is in here. So, how it goes either way, they either accept it or they don't. So, but we'll be discussing this or taking action on this probably in about 15 minutes. With that, we will move on to our regular meeting, which is our regular meeting here tonight. The approval of the minutes for July 14th, 2022 Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting.
So moved.
Any questions?
There's a small correction on page 21, line 12. It's Killian's spot, not Philly's. Other than that, it's.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered. Where are we at? From number six to number nine will be Commissioner Neary on actions.
Good evening. Consider a motion approving the listed bills in the amount of $713,080.91. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving the real estate tax collector refund in the amount of $2,567.54.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
And for the audience's purpose, they would be, landowner was mis-billed by the county. That's why the refund was issued. Consider a motion authorizing the Township Secretary to advertise budget meetings for Monday, August 22nd, Monday, September 19th, Monday, October 24th, all at 7:00 PM. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
Consider a resolution authorizing establishing a volunteer firefighter incentive program for members of the Upper Chi Chester Fire Department. So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
I'd just like to clarify for the public. This is something to hopefully increase participation for volunteers. We are also making it retroactive to the year November, November 2020 to October 21, and then starting again this year, and it will go forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I just want to make a quick comment on that before we move along with his last one. Is we retroback because this is something we summon the towns throughout Delaware County and the state of Pennsylvania. People don't realize that I got a good audience here tonight because I know they're concerned citizens here. We have over 300,000 volunteers in the state of Pennsylvania in the seventies. We're down to 30 for the whole state. It's not getting any better, unfortunately. So, this is a minute little incentive because everybody wants to try to find an incentive program or retention, how do you keep them? And it's tough. This is all volunteers and they have to be professional. So that means they're going through 80-hour courses year after year, fire one, fire two, and continuing. And we're not keeping them. They're five years. So it's coming. I've been a member for, I forget how many years now. It's been 42. In 1978, I joined Ogden Fire. I was president for nine years. I know what's out there. It's not there. It's all over. Everybody's consolidating. Matter of fact, our fire department is in a mix of consolidating now. We did a study with the state, and this is, you've got to get programs to bring them in and keep them. Because in the long run, it's going to cost us to pay somebody. This is all strictly volunteer guys. So just to let you know. I thanked the committee that's been on this. There were some hiccups because there was other towns that put the incentive program in. And it kind of, not backfired, but it got them in a little trouble. And we just had to make sure we were doing it right because they deserve it. Yes, it's five bucks a gallon almost. Our guys are getting up two, three times, two, three times a night out of their car, starting the car running, coming back while we're in bed. So it's their money, it's their time and all that. So we try to help as much as we can. I want to thank Mr. Minor that was on this committee, Mr. Neary, and Oregorga. This is something long passed through, and that's why we had to go back to 2020 to make sure. That was just, actually, that was the year we started this incentive, and we finally got it passed tonight. So I want to thank everybody. Sorry about that. Mr. Neary, next one.
Finally, consider a motion authorizing the Public Works Department to install a temporary handicap-only parking sign in the vicinity of 509 Taylor Avenue. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered. Next action items from number 11 through 17, Commissioner Mike Lourdes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to consider a resolution granting conditional approval of the preliminary land development plan application submitted by Alliance 4800 Chi Chester LLC with the construction of a 105,000 square foot warehouse building and associate improvements at 4800 Chi Chester Avenue.
Are you making that motion?
Yes.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Has the developer agreed to all the requests we have?
I do not believe that they are agreeing to all of the conditions in this message.
She doesn't believe they agree.
Okay, George, we're going to have to have a roll call verdict on this.
Well, just before, if it passes tonight, it's just a preliminary approval. Doesn't mean that it can be weapon built tomorrow.
George, can you do a roll call verdict, starting with my left side? I'll be the last. The other way.
No. Yes.
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 Item number 12, I'd like the board to consider a motion acknowledging the extension granted by the applicant, giving the Upper Chi Chester Township Board of Commissioners until October 3rd, 2022, to hold a public hearing on the intermunicipal liquor license transfer request for 1661 Mill Road, Boothland, PA.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
Is number 13 necessary? Because it's for the sale.
Yes.
Okay. Item number 13, I'd like the board to consider a motion authorizing a township solicitor to advertise a public hearing on an intermunicipal liquor license transfer request for 1661 Mill Road, Boothland, PA, 19061, for Thursday, September 8th, 2022, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
Item number 14, I'd like the board to consider a motion accepting extension granted by Alliance 3033 Market LLC, granting the Board of Commissioners until September 9th, 2022, to act on their subdivision and land development application.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
I'd like the board to consider a motion accepting the extension granted by Am Jumpster Enterprise LLC, granting the Board of Commissioners until November 15th, 2022, to act on their land development application.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
I'd like the board to consider a motion accepting the extension granted by Fizano Brothers Concrete Production, granting the Board of Commissioners until September 9th, 2022, to act on their land development application.
Second.
Any questions?
Yes. What are, what are, wait, what's the holdup here still? I mean?
Yes.
The Fizano plan at the last planning commission meeting was recommended for approval, granting them to the two waivers that they were requesting. At that meeting, we spoke with the engineer and the solicitor for their lawyer for the project and asked them if they would be able to get together everything and attend this group of meetings in September. I'm sorry, in August, they said that they would not and that they were requesting that they would be pushed to September. So they-
They just need more time.
They need more time.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
I'd like the board to consider a motion accepting extension granted by McDonald's USA LLC, granting the Board of Commissioners until November 11th, 2022, to act on their land development application.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered. Okay, next action items will be from Commissioner Joe Becker from number 18 to 22.
Thank you. Consider a motion authorizing the Township Engineer to advertise an ordinance amending Chapter 490 Stormwater Management in the Upper Chi Chester Township Code of Ordinances. So moved.
Questions? Did we iron out the amount when we were on a step or we don't reach it to 1,000? Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
Consider a resolution establishing the signatories on the Green Lake Go Grant Award from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, number 202201145117.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion approving payment request number one from AF Damon for the 2022 road program in the amount of $576,409.17. $493,333.63 to be paid out of the liquid fuels fund.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing the Township Engineer to advertise the bid specifications for the Boothland Highlands Stormwater Project.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
Consider a motion accepting the bid of Scovicchio Construction LLC for the Tower Circle Basin Project in the amount of $88,333.35.
Any questions? No complaints? Well, on your, the references again, I think. I mean, the bid itself was like, I mean, don't get me wrong. I don't mind saving money, but yeah, it's, right. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered. All right, we'll continue with our commissioner's report. Madam Vice President, Paul Ordiger is not here. You have anything for her, George?
I do not. She gave most of her report last week.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Commissioner Dernier.
Doesn't appear the financials are in the book. The financials will be available at the office in the next couple of days. We do have the tax collectors' monthly report. I really appreciate this report. You know, it gives us a clearer idea of what's outstanding and that sort of thing. And finally, the Upper Chi Chester Township Police Department report is also available at the township office for review. And I thank everybody for passing the incentive program tonight. I don't think it's secure all, but it certainly will help some of the younger members. Thank you.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Neary? Moving on, Commissioner Mike Lourdes.
Thank you. Really have anything to report on. I reported last week. We passed all the extensions tonight. I appreciate that. As indicated last week, we have two new hires, Bill, Gavin, and Amy. They're adapting well in the LNI department. We hired Bill Gavin. He is our human pet inspector. So I would advise the public, if there's any complaints about any employees, you can contact that individual and we can work through it. I don't have anything else. Just one last thing. I believe there's, McDonald's is going, the McDonald's in the shopping center where the Walmart's at is going for some variances. I'm not too sure if they're heading there next month or the following month, but they asked for seven variances. And if anybody would like to know what they are, I sent the board a email, copy of it, and let you know specifically. Believe there's some variances on some signs that they're looking for in part.
Yeah, Gabby sent that to us, the whole file. And it's located on one of the pages.
Yes.
It's hard to find.
But other than that, I have nothing else to report on.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Lourdes? Now we'll move along to Commissioner Becker.
Thank you. All the reports are on file. The, I hope everybody got a chance to read their pamphlets they got on forming a stormwater authority. I'm halfway through it. We have a lot going on down there. We need to start getting one step up on that. I think we're going to have a meeting with Lower Chi Chester about the line that's going to run through Lower Chi and tie in to give us more available space at our other two pump stations. Unless anybody has any questions for that or the highway, that's all I have on that, but I'd like to make a comment. I'd actually like to ask a question from the solicitor. We passed an approval for a preliminary approval tonight without them agreeing to the conditions. Where does that put us? I just want some of the residents to hear where it stands. And I'll continue to fight.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Becker?
Just as I was going through Joe's section, those zoning variance requests were misfiled during the report. Any like? Yes. I said Joe, I was finishing Joe, but they were in Joe's area. So they're in the book. There's, it's the bullet, but it's this page. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move along to my report. It's short, sweet, because all, actually, all my reports are on file. To thank everybody also with this incentive program. Far from where we need to be, but it's a start. So if you do support them 110% without more. So other than that, we'll go to our professionals, and then we'll start with our engineer, Lisa Catanha. Engineer Lisa Katania.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you do have a copy of my report. I went through that report last week. Any of the items that we needed to take care of, we're taking care of it during the meeting. And actually, that's all I have this evening, unless anyone has any questions.
I just have one quick one. Have we found out, is it water or sewer on my new street? I just pulled one rock first. There's a ledge. I think it's twenty four eighteen and the water company says it's sewer, but I haven't heard anything back. It didn't work.
I haven't. I haven't heard that it is sewer. I was under the impression from Chester Water Authority that they recognized it was theirs. So I will check that.
Hey, you could stop by and taste it. You'll figure it out quick.
It, it's, it's a simple test. They shouldn't have too much of a problem with it, but um. Last I heard from Chester Water Authority, they had taken ownership and fixed the problem. I don't, I, again, that.
No, it, it just never fails. We, we got such a great growth program anymore. For the last eleven years I've been up there.
There's your pavement.
We are like ninety percent almost in the whole township and next thing you know, there's a. Sinkhole. And I do believe that because once we mill these roads, it disturbs a lot of pipes that are underneath. God knows how old that pipe was or how, whatever, or the. I mean, Okeola took us two years to fix because it was concrete.
Right.
You ever heard of it? I mean, I, I've heard of it, but. It could be concrete. That's it. So.
Yeah, I, I can, I can tell you that a lot of times when we're doing paving because of the vibration. That some of, it's not necessarily the pipe breaks, the joints are, are very, very brittle and the joints actually come apart.
The neighbors are happy, but they're not happy now.
I'm sorry, Lisa. Um, were we able to meet with the resident and Gailie and?
Colleen had sent um, a couple of messages to her. She wanted to meet at seven in the morning and then we never heard back from her. So right now the ball is in her court.
Questions? We'll go to our solicitor, Michael Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a copy of my written report. We went over all the salient items. Uh, last week and all the action items for this week have been taken care of. Thank you, sir. No further information.
Thank you. Has anybody got any questions for the solicitor? Now we're going through our manager, George Nadelos.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, gave, went through all of my items last week and the reports are on file. Um, it, there was some communication today asking uh, if the, the board was interested in moving forward this month with the uh. Approval of the flow analytics proposal for redistricting services. Uh, if the board was to want to uh, vote on that tonight. Uh, there would need to be two motions. The first motion would be to add that item to the, the agenda. And then the second uh, motion, which I would recommend would be for uh, to approve a contract, not, to approve the proposal not to exceed twenty eight thousand, three hundred and ninety five dollars. Subject to the execution of a contract, which would be reviewed by the township solicitor prior to.
All right, I'd like to move to um, add it to the agenda. Add the motion to avoid the.
I need a second. This is for the redistrict. So.
I'll second. Just to get it moved.
Any questions? We'll have a very, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then you need a motion to.
To uh, prove the proposal with flow analytics, uh, not to exceed twenty eight thousand, three hundred and ninety five dollars. Subject to the execution of a contract with review from the solicitor.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Oh, okay. Before we have the voters, are there any public comments? This uh, this contract is, it's. Our duty as commissioners here to uh. Once the census are taking place every ten years and so. To redistrict our wards. Our wards are supposed to be within five percent of each other or one to five percent and ward four is probably about thirty percent. Thirty percent. So. We try to get to twenty percent each ward and mixed a hundred percent at five wards. Um. This, this company here will do some of the labor, a lot of the labor. We did it for over two years, fashioned it out for two years. Never really. Finalized anything because of some issues. Lot of the issues were your state reps, the line would literally cut our township. Into pieces. And when you do a redistricting, you cannot even touch their lines. So what happened was recently. The state did it for us and we are all now in the one and fifty ninth. That means we had no more mine dividing the township into pieces. Or it's easier for us to look at a map or this group and come back with the recommendations, advertising with the public, say, hey. You may be in ward two now, but you may be in ward three next time. And. Because we have to be. It's law. Our job as commissioners is to get it as close as possible. By population, not by who's where, what and how in position somewhere. So. We got to the point where we know where we're at almost and, and it's real close, but they may be, and we will show them our plan too, but. They will help us out in the long run too. It's a slow process. Public meetings, doesn't happen overnight and then we do the final and vote, but. I think there's only been one town that's actually voted on a redistricting in twenty years. So we're trying to be number two to get it right. Try to fix it where Mr. Neary's is at thirty percent and we're like sixteen. So we're trying to be people with population. That's all it's about. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask a question now. I don't know if I highlighted everything.
Just to be, just to be clear, the last time this was done was the first time I was on the Board of Commissioners in nineteen ninety three. I think everybody in this room could agree that the township has expanded exponentially. And most of it's been in the fourth ward. And while I appreciate representing thirty percent of the population. I also get more, I think I get a number of, of phone calls because of. Issues that we have in, in the ward. So uh, I'm not trying to slough them off to anybody, but. You'll, you'll be the first one asked. Uh, in all seriousness, this is something that legally needs to be done and this is an organization that can tell us. What the uh, ramifications are and what the regulations are. So that's why I voted for it.
What, what's the not exceed number again, Joe?
Twenty eight thousand. So we, we have no public comment on this since we did just add this to our agenda tonight. Uh, I thought it was gonna be on there anyway because of last week's meeting. Uh. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. George, there was no more on that. I felt we were doing a contract for the uh, emergency management.
Yeah, so after that meeting, I sent out there all those, if anybody wanted, if you wanted formal proposals, meetings or anything with any of those, we could do that. So if, if everybody's comfortable with them, you can keep doing that, add them on. Um, I just thought since they were just brought out last week, maybe we could like, some, well, some of them are rather large, the stormwater thing. I thought maybe that might be. That might be something the board might wanna, uh, you know, a couple of members may wanna sit in on a presentation to see what the services are.
Yeah, I, I think we could wait then till next month. Another month isn't gonna hurt. Uh, cause. It'll be part this year, part next year for the budget anyways. Uh, he could, he could probably get his uh, laptop and everything else in this year. Now it's three year. Okay, anything else, George?
I have nothing else. Thank you.
Anything to be brought to the attention of the manager? Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Good night.